All right, I have six thirty on my watch at least. So I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees meeting to order on. It's six thirty. We are holding this meeting via Zoom. And the Zoom connection is available at the top of the agenda. As well as if those that don't choose to go through the computer. Can also do it via audio and there's a phone number and a participant ID in there as well or meeting ID in there. The meeting is being recorded. So even the chats and everything are being captured. So just letting everybody know that as well. We'll start off with a roll call to confirm that we have a quorum.
Allen.
Present.
Lindberg. Murphy.
Present.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Valencia.
Present.
Vander Velde.
Present.
Williams.
Present. Trustee Lindberg is excused absent, so he's got a commitment this evening, so he let us know. All right, we have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Item four then is public's, uh, public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. And I will take a pause. And just let everyone know that. If you are going to speak, please let us know who you are. And where your, your, uh, your address is. And then certainly share what your, your thoughts. And we ask you to keep those at a maximum of three minutes. So I'll pause now. All right. I'll move on then to item five. And that is discuss and consider the meeting minutes from our regular board meeting from November second. Is there any questions, comments? Regarding the meeting minutes from November second. From board members.
I'll make a motion to approve. A second.
And a second for Paul. Motion for Troy. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, item six, uh, we'll open a public hearing and I will open a public hearing, public's hearing to hear interested citizens regarding the 2021 proposed budget for the Village of Cottage Grove. So to start off the public hearing, I think we'll. Matt's got a summary in the packet and probably share that. Uh, to begin with, I did hear, and I will relay this in a moment after Matt speaks. Uh, one email that Lisa received and I'll, I'll read that off as well. From a citizen. So Matt, you want to start us off?
Lost my screen there for a second. Sorry about that. Yeah, so, um, the tax levy in, uh, for the current year is about $4.2 million. And, um, the state's allowed tax levy for the 2021 budget is about 4.8 million. Um, the financial management plan, which is our five-year outlook that we use for kind of the starting point of our budget process. Was planned for about 4.5 million. Which is about a 5.9% increase following the budget process that involves all of our committees and department head recommendations. Administrator review, finance committee, ultimately. After all those considerations and the board's review of the budget, um, at their budget workshop. The proposed budget is, uh, $4,410,900. Which is a four and a half percent increase to the levy, however. When you factor in a comparable home from last year to this year, which was $250,000, that same home now is approximately $300,000. And, uh, taking everything into consideration, the approximate tax increase to the average village home is about $62, which comes out to a three and a half percent increase over last year. A quick summary of some of the projects and expenditures that are part of the proposed budget. Uh, there's an addition of one full-time employee, uh, which is 90% a utility position, so only 10% of that is reflected in this general fund budget. So that, that's going to be contingent on approval by the Utility Commission. Uh, the village parking lot is planned to be repaved in 2021. There is a new, uh, some new playground equipment in West Lawn Fourth Edition, which will be funded by development funds, park impact fees. Final phase of the county end bike path is planned to happen, which will be funded, um, hopefully partially through a grant and partially with tax increment district number five funds. Um, if we do not get the grant, the, the TID will pick up 100% of those costs. And then our larger projects that are planned, um, right now to be borrowed for in 2021 include a glacial drumlin path extension, which at that same time, there are plans to do reconstructions of Clark Street and Grove Street as well. Um, and then uh, there, there are also plans to do uh, in the intersection improvements at BB and Bus in, in accordance to uh, improvements or, um, development with the uh, new elementary school and other development in the area. So that's a kind of a brief summary, John. I can turn it back over to you for public comments.
All right, thanks, Matt. This is, uh, public's opportunity to speak on the proposed, uh, 2021 budget. And so again, uh, since we're in open hearing right now, I will pause and allow the public to speak on this particular item and then I'll, um, like I said, I've got one email that Lisa forwarded to me that I'll read that off too as well. So I'm so again, pub, the public, if citizen wants to speak, please share your name, your address. And, uh, feel free to leave your comments, but, uh, let's hold them to up to three minutes so that if we have multiple uh, folks that want to speak, we do not, we make sure everybody gets a chance. All right, I will, uh, I'll read the email that we did receive from a citizen regarding the budget and then certainly we'll continue to open it up for the public to speak. Um, yeah, we received this, uh, late in the afternoon, uh, comment to the village board on the proposed budget uh, for the 2021 calendar year, I believe is CY. Um, the, the email reads the proposed increase of the budget by 4.5% is excessive. Uh, given the current pandemic with the economic impact on our community. Problematic, the increase is excessive. An increase of the range of 1.5 to 2% would be more realistic. I recommend the village board pare back the budget to at least half of the increase. Thank you. Signed, John E. Ziggy. Ziggy, Z W E I G. Um, John is at, uh, 1005 Damascus Trail. So he's within the in the village there. So John wanted to share those thoughts. So I wanted to make sure that the board heard that and everybody heard that as well. So continue to pause for a moment and see if anybody else would like to actually speak. All right, then, uh, we will close the public hearing then and move on to uh, item six A, which is discuss and consider the resolution 2020 dash one three, a resolution adopting the 2021 budget and authorizing the clerk to levy taxes. So anybody from the board want to discuss anything there? Matt already kind, oh, go ahead, Melissa.
Sorry, um, I do want to bring up one, um, one thing. Um, the Dane County Board was unable to, um, increase funding this year for case management and nutrition services that had, um, there was a budget amendment for nutrition services in the Dane County budget, but the amendment did not get approved. And unfortunately, that leaves a little bit of a gap for the senior centers. Um, as well as case management was also not, um, their funding needs um, were not included in Dane County's budget. And, um, Bob's, Bob Powers' um, presentation or discussion to us at our last meeting. Where he indicated that they rely on grants, um, this year that they found that were available because of COVID-19 and, um, and that it's unknown if these would be available next year. Also that they have been relying on the generosity of our community to help uh, fund and make up for the gaps that have been left. Um, especially due to the lack of United Way funds from last year that were discontinued at the end of 2019. Um, I'm I guess I'm requesting um, if the board would be, if our board would approve, uh, increasing the amount that we provide to Colonial Club, um, by $4,000 for a total of $24,000. Because they make a lot of, they, they do a lot with so little and I know that seniors throughout our community are hurting. And they provide a great resource for our seniors. So I don't know if I, how, how other board members would feel about that, I guess.
That's a, I think that's what we need to find out. Thanks, Melissa. I appreciate the update from Dane County. That's unfortunate that the those, that's those fundings were not included. I know Bob was counting on that, so. Um, other thoughts from board members regarding this or the budget in general?
Was there still some, um, money? Last time when we had our budget workshop, Heidi had discovered the line item that had, you know, much more money put in it than was needed and we were able to divide some of that up. Was the, all of that kind of taken up or is any of that still in that line item that was in excess?
Um, I know that that was supposed to be fixed at the first outset when we had it because I noticed the line. Uh, but it was still in there, obviously, when, when we met as a board. So I think it's been moved and assuming it's been moved and corrected other than the amount we allocated for uh, those purposes. Matt, you want to touch on that?
Yes, that, that line item had, uh, 20,000 that was in there from the previous year. Um, and and that was for a project this year. That's not for next year and, um, for whatever reason, wasn't reduced. It, it is reduced now to its standard professional services, um, in forestry. So that, that reduced that line item by, I want to say it was 13,000 and then the, the board approved at the workshop to ship seven of that 13,000 to diversity, equity and inclusion. A line item which is in the general fund budget now and then to reduce the the levy by the balance.
Okay. So it's been.
And that's what, that's what's reflected in, in front of us.
Thanks.
Uh, we haven't heard from Colonial Club since the county, uh, made the decision. I'm assuming this was fairly recent because we just met on this, right, Melissa?
Um, yeah, the county approved the budget on the ninth, November ninth.
Thank you.
Last Monday, yes.
And I think Bob kind of was anticipating that because he left us with his final comments of that the county was probably not going to be able to fund, uh, what they were anticipating. If what I remember Bob saying kind of in his party and signing off comments and would appreciate any additional funding we would to be able to consider. I support, I, I would support if, um, you know, $4,000 total for the year would increase us to what? For, I mean, like a hundredth of a percent? I don't have my calculator up.
It would, it would be, the, the impact for the average taxpayer would go up by a, a dollar or two.
Yeah. I mean, I think, given the fact that we are in a pandemic, um, I know my husband is a delivery driver for Colonial Club for the Meals on Wheels. Um, and the state of the folks he delivers to. It's, it's, um, it's, it's hard for the seniors right now that are in, in their homes, can't get out. Couldn't get out much before and, and are struggling even more. So now with this pandemic, um, so I, I know the need is is real and I hear about it in my home every week when he comes home from his delivery schedule. So.
Other board members have thoughts?
I know we heard from one of our, our community members suggesting that our percent increase is too high. Uh, I would say, given everything that's been said though, in regards to the Colonial Club and how important that is, um, it's very, very, it sounds like very, um, minor dollars. Uh, I'd rather see us uh, be able to align it or absorb it from some other area, but if we cannot, I'd be supportive of adding the $4,000.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Anybody else have thoughts on this?
I, I guess if I can pipe up, um, uh, I, I think it's a great thought to help support the Colonial Club, but I also think that uh, citizens, other citizens within our community are also possibly suffering because of the pandemic and uh, some folks have been furloughed, some folks have been uh, permanently laid off, some folks, um, are not at the income level it used to be. So a, as trivial as a dollar or two per household, uh, it, it may affect some families financially. Um, more that live right here and, and, uh, are in our community. So I would uh, support the budget as presented without the increase.
Okay, anybody else have thoughts? I know we already, everybody knows we already increased it from the prior year based on the, the funding too. So all the board members are aware of that as well.
Um, I would just, I would just note that the funds that we provide to the Colonial Club go back to our community. So it's not like it's being used for other communities. Everything we give to the Colonial Club, they use in our community.
Heidi, you have a thought?
Yeah, is there, Matt, do you see another place, as Paul suggested, where we could pull the $4,000?
Um, that, from a staff perspective, I mean, there's not a clear spot to do that. That's more of a political or policy decision of the board. You know, at, at this point. I, I mean, I could, I could try to on, on the fly, but it's a little bit tough to.
Obviously, you're closer to, closest to it, Matt. Um, the one item that I got my hands into a bit was with the landfill with the vertical vents. I know we put the full amount in and you know, it's really still an unknown. Uh, we don't know for sure if we're going to have to do that in 2021. I, I do understand that we want to prepare for the worst, but you know, maybe there's maybe there's an opportunity there.
Yep. Thanks, Paul. The funds that Paul's referencing are, uh, in the capital fund. Um, what, and, and we're talking about a general fund dollars. So that um, Paul, the, in the capital fund, the, the levy does pick up some of, um, some of that funding. But unless, unless the expenditures and that were the, the, the amount that's planned to be paid for out of the levy, uh, we'd have to lower that. So I, that's probably probably not a realistic option.
Yeah, got it right away there. Thanks for the clarification.
Um, I know we added the diversity, equity, inclusion line and that is an important priority. I do wonder if we might have an opportunity to look for partnerships and sponsorships if we run some programming with that with local businesses or the chamber. I know, um, Summit is interested in things like that or partnering with the school and, um, you know, how else we can be creative with finances on that, um, to support both of these missions.
Uh, the, that line item, I, I know when the board was talking about putting money for diversity, equity and inclusion, there that was really a best guess that the board came up with. So that committee would still need to come to the board with you know, a firm proposal and, and purpose for the use of funds. So it's possible that not all that seven will be needed and the, the board could always consider at a later date additional funding for the Colonial Club. They might just um, you might not be able to give them an, an answer today, but maybe, maybe this is something that's taken up. This is just an idea late, later next year.
Wondering if it's maybe just if it's um, opposite of, in which we take from that 7,000 that we put for DEI, take 4,000 of it, put it to Colonial Club, leave 3,000 for DEI and then if DEI during the year, because we, we know for sure there's a need at Colonial Club. That's not a question. We don't know yet what the DEI committee is going to work on and what the cost will be. So maybe we take the money, the 4,000 from there and put it to Colonial Club. And then the DEI committee comes back to the board if we do in fact need more than the $3,000 that would be left in that fund.
Thoughts on what Sarah just shared from board?
Well, one, one point of, one, one point of order, just be, before we get uh, too much further, um, John, if you wouldn't mind me asking Rick if he can explain this might have to be handled if there is a, a motion to change the budget. At this stage, there should be an amendment. A motion for an amendment to the budget and then that would change the amount that's in the, in the resolution and then there'd be a second motion, but I, I think Rick can maybe cover that. That might be helpful, uh, before we get too much further.
Right, so as I was saying, basically depending on how the board wants to go forward with this, if the levy amount's going to change, you would just need a, a motion to amend the budget and the to account for where you're moving the money from. And then since that wouldn't increase the levy, you don't need a motion for that. But if you're going to increase the levy, you're going to need two motions then, one for the budget amendment and then one for increasing the levy amount. Um, since we've already got this resolution drafted, we can still have everything approved and basically you approve the resolution subject to those amendments. And then we can just make those changes since it's already approved and it can be signed after that. We don't need to go through this process again, but um, just what you need to handle it the correct procedure wise.
So, so Rick, just an hypothetical, if, if the board moved moved funding from one line item to another within the same fund and it did not change the amount of the levy. Then, uh, the, I mean, the resolution's fine as, as is, they would just have a they would just make a normal motion to, to do that in a two-step.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah.
So what I am suggesting does not impact the levy. It would just be a transfer from one line item to the next.
Correct.
Um, can I ask about a different topic or?
It's all about budget. So yes, as long as it's about budget, sure.
Right, yes, it is. Um, Matt and his, you know, I just want to make sure we're done with, uh, Colonial Club, uh, discussion. Um, not that we can't come back to it, I guess. But the, in that summary, a lot of the things that you mentioned are not funded off the levy, is that right? Like, um, the parking lot is, that's capital improvement, the playground is the parks fees. And we have the TID five and grant for the bike path and then borrowing for the other projects. So I just wanted to go over the big ticket items and the levy increase because we did try to keep those to a minimum, but there were some things, um, like the school resource officer, um, we're taking that bill. Um, because schools virtual, the legal council with the new rates.
Sure.
The village's share of Deer Grove EMS. I mean, those are kind of the, the three biggest ticket items for the increase. Is that right?
I can tr- excuse me. I can, I try to go through those quickly. Let's see. Yeah, we're, we're anticipating, um, about 35 dot, $35,000 less in school resource officer. Um, revenue. Um, we have $30,000 additional to reflect, um, the current realities of, uh, are, are the current attorney rates of service and, um, we have a $39,000 increase for Deer Grove BMS. $7,000 for the general funds por, portion towards the utility position. Uh, $4,000 increase for Colonial Club. And $14,000 for uh, maintenance and operating costs for the shelter and splash pad. Tho, those are kind of the main ones that I would say impact the general fund that are mainly accounting for the three and a half percent increase for taxpayers.
Thanks for going over those items, Matt. I think it's good to capture that.
Um, are we sure that, that, um, or has the school district said that they aren't paying their amount towards the resource officer or I guess, or is that, I never I don't know where we ended up on that. If we were just guessing that they weren't going to or?
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure that Um, I'm not, I'm not sure that I, I, I don't, we just don't think they'll pay for it for not getting the service.
So it's possible that they will too.
Unlike.
We don't know. We don't know one way or the other yet.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, um, I don't want to put words in the, into chief's mouth, but he, he, I, I believe Dan has talked with, with the school and that was what we, what we got from those discussions. And, and I, I believe it's also, and, and that came up in discussions with the updated agreement, that, that was more so there, there wasn't the stipulation as to the situation we're in right now with the, with the old agreement. Is that accurate, Dan?
Yeah, when I talked to the school superintendent, he told me that if there was no school, then they wouldn't be paying for the school resource officer for this school year. The, uh, for last school year, I do not know what the story is on that. I think, uh, there may be some further discussion on that, but, but until there's actual in session students and the SRO is actually at the school this year, this school year, they're not going to be paying is what he told me initially.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions, comments, or discussion regarding the budget?
I, I would say I like Sarah's idea to take, um, 4,000 from the DEI line and put it over towards Colonial Club at this point. Um, because what the DEI committee will be working on, we, we don't know yet and what they'll need. And so I think it just makes sense because we do know there is a need at Colonial Club. So, so I would be in favor of that. Uh, and thank you, Sarah, for bringing that up.
All right. So as a consensus, kind of keep the levy as proposed in the resolution and move the 4,000 from diversity over to Colonial Club right now. And certainly, obviously, diversity, uh, the committee can come back and, uh, they'll come back to the board with any proposal we'll have anyway. And then the board at that time can evaluate wh- what we need to do for funding if, if that's indeed what's needed. Am I capturing that correctly?
I'm aligned with that.
John, we should have a, a motion.
That's, and that's the next thing I'm gonna say. I didn't want, if I heard anybody say otherwise. Um, so is there a motion from a, from a trustee?
So if I heard Rick correctly, then I guess I would make a motion to amend the budget um, lines taking 4,000 from DEI committee and putting 4,000 into the colonial line, uh, colonial club line.
That's, that's correct.
And then the rest of that, Rick, would be approving the overall levy and the resolution.
Correct. We won't need to amend the resolution because the levy won't change.
I can second that realignment.
Melissa, are you okay with that, what I just added?
Yes. That was what I was gonna say. Thanks.
I don't want to put more words in my mouth by no means, but I want to make sure we got the, um, it covered correctly the way you intended and, and certainly Paul missing your second down as well.
Yes. No, I thought it had to be two separate motions. So if it can all be one, that's perfect.
Well, look to Rick. I think that's what I got from what Rick said, but let me confirm.
Yes, for all good.
Okay. That's what I thought. All right. Any further discussion on, uh, approving, uh, the resolution and the levy as presented and making the changes of the 4,000 from those two different committees or line items, I should say. Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. All right, um, we'll move on to item seven is unfinished business. And the first one there is to discuss and consider a development agreement with RG Houston regarding, uh, Atwell Suites, uh, development in TID number five. Um, I don't know if I saw Aaron or not. I'm sure he's there, but.
Otherwise I can handle this one.
I'm here, but I don't direct this public.
Okay.
So, uh, I guess I won't give you a line-by-line summary of the development agreement, but it's uh, fairly straightforward. Um, we think it's, it aligns with what the village had, um, wanted as far as the TIP incentive goes. So it's a 1.5 million TIP incentive, and it's a combination of pay-as-you-go, tax increment financing and room tax reimbursement. And we've negotiated the agreement with the developer. We feel comfortable recommending this for the board's approval. We feel that there are sufficient protections for the village. Um, one thing that's a little different about this agreement versus the last one that we did uh, with the Comfort Suites is with this agreement, if they don't meet their assessed value guarantee, which is 9.5 million, then their incentive goes down by a proportionate percentage each year. So whatever shortfall they have in their assessed value, then their payment's gonna decrease that same amount percentage-wise. So, uh, given the totality of the negotiations, we feel comfortable recommending this for the board's approval.
All right. Any questions for Rick? Or Aaron? Regarding the developer agreement with, with Atwell.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the developer agreement with RG Houston regarding Atwell Suites development into number five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Sarah. Uh, any further discussion? All right. Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Item seven B then is discuss and consider a developer's agreement with Purposeful Planning LLC regarding the, uh, Dolphin Swim Academy, uh, development in, also in TID number five. And so I'll kick it to Rick. Rick and Larry have another memo in your packet regarding the Dolphin Swim Academy agreement.
Yep. And this one is even more straightforward, I guess. Um, so the development incentive is based on the real estate transaction. So they were given credit for the sale of the lot. Um, so really the, this is basically just putting into agreement their assessed value guarantee of 1.5 million dollars. So again, we feel comfortable recommending this for the board's approval. Um, we've negotiated with the developer and they're comfortable with the agreement as well. Uh, so we recommend approval.
All right. Any questions, uh, for Rick regarding this particular developer's agreement?
Make a motion to approve the developer agreement with Purposeful Planning LLC regarding Dolphin Swim Academy development into number five.
I'll second.
Thank you, Heidi. Thank you, Sarah. All right. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Item seven C then is discuss and consider the term, uh, for the draft of Flynn Hall agreement and some minor edits. So, uh, Lisa was kind enough to put this in the packet and Rick has actually been the one that's working on, worked on this. The, uh, the towns, I met with Chris Hampton, the town came back and asked for a couple items for consideration. Um, first being the duration of the agreement. And they're asking rather than two years, uh, it to be a five-year agreement. And again, this is just, uh, in their minds, uh, just to, it makes it more of a, a solid agreement longer term for the, for Flynn Hall. Um, they don't want to, there's nothing regarding the, uh, whether you want, any party wants to withdraw from it. That's still one year, although they do have, he suggested because of the budget cycle and it, it as well, that if the town knew by February 1st of that year, uh, that somebody wanted out of the agreement, they could plan for it and, you know, he still could be out by the end of the year. So it, that part would just require Rick to add that, that, uh, language in there. Uh, and then the only other piece that they suggested just to protect, um, everyone is there's a line in here regarding maintenance. And it's on page five and it says other similar types of maintenance. And this, this goes back to the village, uh, wanting just to ensure there was clarity on the maintenance, that it was just, uh, upkeep maintenance, like light bulbs and those types of things and furnace filters and not say paving the park, parking lot. Uh, Chris suggested that we put a dollar figure in, in there just so it's clear. So say a hundred dollars or something that like that on the maintenance item. That way, um, it kind of covers us. So there's no ambiguity there. So those are the, the three items that, uh, the town came back with. So any comments, questions?
Just so I understand, uh, we had a five-year agreement. They came back to us and said they wanted a one-year agreement. Now they're back to a five-year agreement?
Um, I think there were, uh, multiple views on this when I think the joint boards met. One, at one point, somebody said just do a one-year agreement revolving, um, there's been thrown out five. I think there's been thrown out three. We threw out two. Um, the biggest part of this, I think for the village was we just want an easier way if, if the village decided a future board, for instance, decided that they wanted to withdraw because we had say a community center that fulfilled our needs for this instead of Flynn Hall or whatever reason, um, that there was an easier way to get out of the agreement. And that's kind of what we're trying to accomplish here as well as um, the clarity on the maintenance. And so I think the term has always been, it was a five-year. Somebody proposed one, we proposed two. I think there was thrown out three, um, along the way. So it's been kind of all over the map. But at the end of the day, whether it's five, two, or three, um, it re-ups and if no party wants to, and there's also one, one-year withdrawal or even 11 months in this case, if we put in that language of February 1st.
I'll, I'll make that motion to, uh, approve based on the, um, changes to the agreement, uh, that you presented then, John.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion second then, uh, to approve those matter, those changes. Any further discussion?
If I could have one question. Um, so you'd mentioned a dollar amount. Is there a specific dollar amount that you would want added in there for the maintenance costs?
Uh, I just wrote a hundred dollars. I don't, I mean, um, if, if the board feels otherwise, uh, a different value, I, I'm, I'm okay with that. Um, it, it's just, I, I think it's a good idea that, that Chris brought up. It's, it just protects us from, you know, um, having ambiguity on, on whatever it is.
Would it be the same dollar value that the town would then contribute? Is that the idea?
I think so, or the other parties, because it's a three-party involved in, in that. So maybe it's not a, maybe a hundred dollars is too much. Maybe it shouldn't only be 50.
I guess the, the other, the other parties would have to agree before we can just put that number in though, right? I mean.
Uh, yes, this, this draft has to go back through to the lines, to the town, to, um, the historical side.
I'm, I'm okay with a hundred dollars. If we, if we had something like not to exceed a hundred dollars, unless there's additional approval from the board or something like that.
Rick, uh, your legal mind?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter.
That, uh, that would give me at least enough direction to draft it.
Okay.
Um, I see the, I see the agreement has one dollar in it for the historical society. So the language is in there for their one dollar. I would imagine it could be similar language. For ours. Sorry, Melissa, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so I just wanna understand with the renewal, so it would be a five-year agreement. But if like after, and is the time period from January 1st to December 31st that this agreement is in effect? Does it like theoretically start January 1st of every year?
That's correct. Um, so I believe the current agreement is supposed to end in December. So this would be sort of the subsequent agreement to that. So it'd be five years starting January 1st, I believe. Um, if I'm recalling correctly. So it's a five-year agreement, but you would still be able to withdraw with 12 months' notice, um, subject to that February 1st deadline at least.
So then theoretically, and I'm not saying this, I just want to understand to make sure. So if we approve this with the five-year, language in here and then February 1st of 2021, like January 31st of 2021, we were like, oh, we don't want to be in this anymore. We would just have to let them know. So it's technically only be a one-year agreement?
Uh, if, if the village wanted to withdraw, I mean, it's, it's not like a hard five-year agreement. It's fairly easy to withdraw.
Okay. Based on that then, otherwise I think five years is too long, but um, with the opportunity to withdraw, I guess I would be okay with it then.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor then?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, then we'll move on to item eight, uh, new business. And the first one, A, is discuss and consider ratification of the collective bargaining agreement between the Village of Condes Grove and the Wisconsin Professional Police Association Law Enforcement Employee Relations Division for July, January 20, January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023.
I can give a quick intro, John?
Yes, please.
Uh, Chief Labor, uh, Attorney Wes Scott and I have, uh, we met with the police union's, uh, bargaining, uh, committee, I guess you could say, a couple times, um, recently. And, um, essentially what you have in front of you tonight, you have the, the clean version of the agreement, which is the proposed final, which the uh, union has ratified for approval and the, the final step is for the, for the board to, uh, consider doing the same. We had, I had also emailed you some wage comparisons, uh, that, that factored into the considerations in this agreement. And, um, there's also the red line that was included in the packet. So, um, with that, I can turn over to Attorney Wes Scott, who is gonna give us a summary of the changes in the agreement and, um, board can feel free to ask any questions. Mike, you're muted.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Probably sounded better before. Um, the, uh, as Matt said, the chief, myself and Matt met with the, uh, union and its bargaining team on, on a couple of occasions. Uh, the purpose was to bargain a successor collective bargaining agreement to the um, one that expires at the end of this year. We've, uh, made a few language changes, uh, really. We've, uh, made a few language changes, uh, really. Uh, no significant economic changes other than the proposed wage increases. Uh, the union has notified us, has been ratified by the membership. So the last step is for the village board to, um, ratify the overall tentative agreement. Um, you have, you should have a red line graph to that document in front of you. Kind of the shortcut version is that. We moved some language from a side letter of agreement regarding the school resource officer. Um, into the body of the contract. That was some language that was kind of agreed upon. Between contracts. And so that was cleaned up by folding it into the contract. Uh, we also had to modify the language in article twenty-two regarding. Fair share because the law on that has changed. The old contract language was no longer enforceable. So that was cleaned up. Uh, so it complies with current law. Um, one change we did make was, um. We improved language in the collective bargaining agreement regarding the chief's ability to hire officers. Um. From a lateral standpoint, officers with experience and to bring them in. At a wage rate commensurate with that officer's experience. Rather than having to slot the officer in at a lower rate of pay than the officer may have deserved. Um, and we also modified the, uh, period of time, the waiting period. For new hire police officers before they could take vacation from eighteen months and we reduce that to fifteen months. So those were all the changes with the exception of the wages. Uh, the wages that we've tentatively agreed upon were a, uh, one percent increase effective January first of two thousand twenty-one. An additional two percent effective July first of two thousand twenty-one. So that effectively has a, you know, three percent lift in wages at the end of the year with a two percent cost to the village. Um, the same proposed increases in the second year, one percent January one. And an additional two percent on, um, July first. And then in the third year, we've, um. Agreed upon a two and one-half percent increase effective, uh, January one of. Um, two thousand twenty-three. Um, that said. There is still a. We still need to be aware of the fact that the, the wages for the Cottage Grove Police Officers. Are low on the spectrum compared to what we consider to be the comparable communities. Um, and there have been no problems with a retention standpoint. To date, but that's something that we're always trying to keep our eye on to make sure that. That does not become a problem in the future. Um, and that's why we thought that these were, uh, appropriate increases. It really doesn't change the ranking, if you will, of Cottage Grove's rates compared to the comparable communities. Um, but they're not losing ground either. And it's also consistent with, uh. What we're seeing in other comparable increases. Uh, are there any specific questions regarding, um. Our intentions in that regard or, uh, the language or the economic components?
Are the intentions to get us so that we're not in the bottom part of, uh, salary for comparable communities? That doesn't feel good to me to be.
We're, we're working on it. You know, this kind of, it doesn't like jump you to the next rung, but it gets you closer. It's, it's, it's hard to do. In one fell swoop, but, but that's something that we're kind of cognizant of and, and, um, keeping in mind. And that's, you know, there are. Also certain benefits, um, being employed with Cottage Grove Police Department that people don't have at other departments. And that's what. You know, perhaps offsets the, the difference in compensation when you look at the, the, the total package. But we are trying to be very. Mindful of that, um, to make sure that, uh, they're being treated fairly.
Other questions, Dan?
Yeah, so, um, I noted that there was not gender neutral language in the. Um, in the contract or in the agreement. And I'm just wondering if that had been looked into.
Uh, Matt brought that to my attention. Um, so the, the way it is currently, you know. We cannot insist upon any changes. I have reached out to the, uh, business agent for the WPPA. And, and stated that, um, we would like to be able to go ahead and make those modifications in this agreement. Um, she indicated to me today, uh, that she needs to run it by, uh. The bargaining committee, but that she personally did not have any concerns with that. So. That may be something that we are yet able to do in this collective bargaining agreement. If not. It will be the first thing on the plate for the successor one.
Great. Thank you. I just think that it's important since it is, uh, one of the board's priorities and that's, um. Just cleaning up language that used to be used in the past, just to make it more equitable. So thank you.
Of course.
Other questions, comments?
If, if I can ask, uh, the, uh, pay scale, uh, percentage raises that are, are, have been approved is, are those in addition to COLA? Uh, raises as well?
Um, not really. Uh, there are wage steps. In the collective bargaining agreement that are tied to years of service. For example, there's a. There's the in-hire rate and then there's a one-year, a two-year, a three-year, a five-year, a seven-year and a ten-year. So there are increases attached if somebody's anniversary brings them to one of those new steps. Um, many of the officers have been here. Long enough where some of them aren't getting any of those anymore. So it is only these contract increases that we're discussing. And other ones, um, when they hit one of those experience benchmarks. Would get an additional increase, which is all dependent upon what step in the range they're at. Does that answer your question?
It, it, it does. And also I guess, uh, what about cost of living? Do they get cost of living increases in addition?
No, no.
Percentages. Okay.
No, sir.
Cause those percentages barely meet the COLA. I mean, the one to two percent increase, but I mean, what is COLA this year? I forgot. I already one and a half or two percent in and of itself.
It's, I, it, it's trending downwards. I think in around here, Matt had a. I know he knew exactly what it was during bargaining, but I, I was thinking it was like one point five or one point six percent.
When, when we started the budget process, it was about two percent. And as, uh. Attorney Wes Scott mentioned, it's been, it's been trending down. It, it could be. Yeah, maybe one and a half percent now. So, or, or moving in that direction.
So they should not suffer any, you know, loss of earning capacity. There, there will be a slight increase. And then again, to the extent that, uh, there's somebody who has less than ten years of service. Um, then they would get the, um, bumps, uh, attendant to those, to those, uh. Milestones. For example, somebody who, um. Uh, make, is at the one-year rate. Uh, would be at twenty-four sixty-eight. And once they hit their second year anniversary, they would get nearly a two-dollar an hour increase. So they're not. Insignificant bumps when they're, uh, when they get a longevity increase.
Other questions or comments?
I would move to approve the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement between Village of Cottage Grove and the WPPA. Law enforcement employee relations division for January one, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Troy. Um, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Uh, all right. Uh, item eight B is discuss and consider. A request from CF Investments for a reduction in the park fees regarding, uh, Cottage Grove Commons Phase Two. So there is, uh, information in the packet. Um. And this. Turn it over to Aaron then.
Again, unless you'd prefer to hear from the Franks and their attorney first and, you know, the rationale and background for their request.
Oh, Aaron. Um, I'm sorry. Yes, Aaron, we, we would prefer that then. That makes more sense. So, uh. Craig or Corey, do you wanna?
Sure. Uh, Craig Frank, CF Investments. Um, and, um. For this portion, I should say this agenda item, um, I have a Jesse Spankowsky, my attorney. Uh, who will, um, give, um, uh, a summary of, uh, our request and, um. Uh, he has a fair amount of, um, additional support too that we can get into. Uh, but, um. Uh, bottom line is, um, uh, like I said, put on a little presentation here and, uh, we're open here and, uh. We'll, uh, he'll answer any questions you may have regarding this. So, Jesse, you available?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everybody. Um, so I think you probably all received the, uh, park fees proposal that we prepared. And I think, uh, to start with, uh, the, the basis for this proposal, uh, does, uh, exist within the ordinances. Um, specifically the village ordinances, um. Recognize that the requirements under chapter two seventy-four, including park fees. May be waived or modified in a planned unit development. I think that shows to some extent that the village, uh, considered that these planned unit developments may be different than your traditional. Subdivision that's consists mainly of single-family homes. Um, to my understanding. Uh, that's kind of as far as it went, that there were the possibility in the ordinance of it being waived or modified. But that there really haven't been parameters or other policies set forth thus far. Um. In our proposal, we provided what we believe is a justification for a reduction in the park fees for this particular planned unit development. Um, I, as Craig mentioned, I did, we did provide, um, some data and statistics from, from census. Figures mainly and also some, um, building sites of community, you know, kind of showing that multifamily. Developments, uh, especially ones that consist of a large number of, uh, efficiency up to two-bedroom. Uh, apartments do tend to have lower occupancy and fewer children than what you would find in a, in a single-family development. Um, our belief is that that is a justification that would, um, give. Uh, rise to reduction in the park fees that you may otherwise have under the ordinance. Uh, the, specifically, we thought that the, uh, percentage reduction that would be appropriate based on this development was a fifty percent reduction. Uh, and then again, that's based mainly on the, the occupancy from the types of units that are being built as part of this. Uh, in addition, uh, the ordinance does, uh, have a clause in it as it relates to planned unit developments that. Uh, the board, the village board may consider private recreation or open space, uh, as a substitute for the parkland dedication. Uh, as listed in the proposal, uh, the developer does plan on, uh. Constructing approximately eight hundred thousand dollars worth of recreation, uh, facilities within this development. Uh, recognizing that, that some of those are, are, are probably less, uh, usable to all the public than others. Uh, the credit. That is being requested for that is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on the amenities that are being built. Additionally, I think it's, uh, it's important to understand some of the financial background and how this affects the developer. Um, when we look at the appraisal of the northern phase of this development. Uh, it appraises out at approximately, uh, nine thousand dollars per unit or five dollars per square foot. Uh, when you apply that to the south phase, the one we're talking about doing now, that, uh. Based on the number of units, about two hundred and seventy or the five dollars per square foot, it's right around a two-point four million dollar value for the property. The purchase price for the property that, that, uh, my client's paying is, is about. One point four million, just a little less than that. And he is anticipating. Public improvement, construction costs of a little under nine hundred thousand dollars. When you put those two together, uh, you leave, you come up with a value of about two point, almost two-point three million dollars, which is, uh. Which is awfully close to what the, uh, the actual value of the property is based on the appraisal. Uh, that, that means that, uh, it's hard for him as a developer to, uh, to absorb the cost of the park fees into his development because the. Lender is gonna look at what the value of the units and the land are. Uh, the park fees are not something that, that he can borrow against, so to speak. So, uh, this is, you know, in our opinion, it's a much different situation than, than your, again, your typical, um, subdivision where you have single-family lots that. Uh, you're not talking about, uh, you know, nine or ten thousand dollars per unit. You're talking more like a hundred thousand dollars per unit potentially for just the land value itself. For these reasons, uh, we do respectfully request that the board consider a park fee reduction for this development. Uh, as indicated in our proposal, our, our numbers were the fifty percent decrease and then the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar credit for the amenities. Thank you.
All right. Um, Craig or Corey, anything else? Or we'll turn it over to, uh, Aaron?
I think that pretty much sums up, uh, our, um, uh, we're wrapped with, uh, that assessment and, uh, what we're hoping to obtain here regarding it. Um, and, um, you know, the, uh, most recent element that he was talking about, uh, as far as financing just came up when, um. Uh, we had a few initial assessments as far as a potential, uh, value for appraisal purposes and, uh. Uh, the definite red flag, um, uh, when it comes to values. Uh, so. Uh, that again, which is further justification beyond what we originally, uh, felt was good justification for reduction in fees. Uh, so yeah, we're. Uh, here to of course, answer any further questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Um, I guess we'll have Aaron walk through his memo and then turn it over to the board to ask. Uh, either the Franks or their attorney or Aaron, any questions? It's, it's kind of a. You wanna walk through?
Sure.
Thank you.
So. The main part of my report is just laying out a few different options of how you could choose to respond, uh, to this request. Um, the first one, um, the ordinance does say the board may, um, make these kind of adjustments. So. You do have the option to say no. Obviously, you know, if these become too burdensome on the project, you run the risk of the project going away. Um, would be the, the downside there. Um, the second option obviously is to just say yes to what they're asking for. Uh, the third one would be. You could, you know, if you're kind of agreeing with the argument that the multifamily units. Um, may have less of a demand on, on our parks than a single-family would. You could offer some kind of a discount, but maybe one that's less than fifty percent they're asking for. Um, uh, similar with the amenities, um. I believe the construction cost of those is gonna be eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand, something like that. They're asking for a discount of two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, you know, you could counter with something less than that, two fifty. Um. One potential option, um. If the assessed value of the project comes in higher than what. Um, the applicants are guaranteeing in the developer agreement that would create extra increment in the district. Um, we could put something in the developer agreement that if there's anything extra like that, it could go back towards paying for the park fees. I guess the benefit for the village in that scenario is that, um. those fees would still be getting paid to our parks department. Um, the downside, obviously, for the applicant is that, you know, that increment may not be there if the assessed value is not higher. The sixth one would be to, like I say, did them in the wrong order here, that was the sixth one, the fifth one. Um, instead of looking at a discount for multifamily units, um, instead making it more of an incentive for the affordable units. Um, these are not affordable in the tax credit sense like moving out was, but the eighty-eight condo units in this project were at a, a lower price point than what would be typical for a owner-occupied unit. And I could see certainly, um, offering some kind of a discount on the park fees for those units, and that, I think, would set a good precedent, um, moving forward for, for other affordable projects. A seventh option would be, um, changing the due date for these fees. Most of them are due, um, at the time the plant is recorded. Um, some of them are due at the time the building permits come out. I mean, those could be adjusted to, you do, maybe upon occupancy of the building or something like that. Then obviously, you could combine any of those different scenarios. So one option I put out there, and it's not necessarily a recommendation, it's more of an example, but if you were to grant a fifty percent reduction on the eighty-eight, uh, condo units that were more affordable than, you know, the typical unit in the village, um, that would get you a reduction of about a little under two hundred and fifteen thousand. If you granted their request for the two hundred and fifty thousand reduction on the amenities, uh, that would get you a little under four hundred and sixty-five thousand, reduced, and a balance of eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, which would be kinda somewhere in between what they're asking for and, um, the full value. So I think there's different ways to handle it. I think, um, the applicants are hoping to get some concrete direction, um, in the interest of getting the developer agreement done, because I know they do have some deadlines and things related to ordering construction materials and things like that.
Alright, thanks, Aaron. Questions for, from the board?
John, can I? Go ahead?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Um, so I just have, um, a couple comments while we consider this. Um, and I, I don't want this to be a barrier for development, so I wanna start out with that, but I also want to make a case for how important parks and park development, um, are for the village and for these future residents. Um, I mean, if we're talking average of two residents per unit, that's five hundred and thirty-eight new Cottage Grove residents that may not have a demand for playgrounds for children, but, you know, might belong to a softball league, or a kickball league, or, um, tennis, basketball courts, volleyball courts. And all of this does cost a significant amount of money. Um, we do have Baccan Park, but even grading to build more tennis courts at Baccan Park is a significant investment and, um, and these are investments for the future value of this development. It'll be worth more down the road, be more desirable for people to move to if we have parks. But I also don't wanna discourage them from developing amenities on their property either. So I think we can find a balance. I liked Aaron's proposal here, um, but I wanted to put the parks side of things in there too.
Alright, thanks, Heidi. Other comments from board members?
I'm not sure which option this falls into, Aaron, there's so many, I'm a little overloaded with options, um, but I appreciate all the options. But I'm wondering, you know, I can appreciate the fifty percent reduction in park fees with the, these apartments, the type of apartments, and the eight hundred thousand dollar investment that the company, the developer is making in onsite amenities. And so I'm wondering what others would think about if we were to do the fifty percent reduction and then instead of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, what are we calling it? What do you call it? Um, reduction, right, just a, a reduction. If we just reduce it down to basically cover the eight hundred thousand dollars that the developers would be already investing. So I think that in my quick calculation, it would just, it would be instead of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction, a hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollar reduction. And I think that would, if I did my math right, um, which is questionable sometimes, um, that that would get to the eight hundred thousand dollars that the developer would be investing and would increase a little bit the amount that they'd be paying based on their proposal. I don't know if other, if that makes sense to anybody else.
So Sarah, where's your, your final number then?
I, oh, gosh.
Sorry.
No, I know, I, so, okay, so what I basically was saying was, if we do the, the two, the first component, the fifty percent reduction of fees for all units from forty-eight, eighty-four to twenty-four, forty-two.
Okay.
Okay, and then they're asking for an additional beyond that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction in fees, which gives a total reduction in the proposal of nine hundred and four thousand, four fifty-six. So I am suggesting, what if we did a total reduction to total eight hundred thousand dollars? So the fifty percent would get us close, and then instead of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction, it'd be a hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fifty-six. I didn't, uh, anybody else have, is anybody following my logic, or, or I could just?
I'm, I'm getting, I, I think I'm getting what you're proposing, so...
You're getting what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, go to the two, four, four, two.
Uh.
And then instead of the additional two hundred and fifty thousand that they're asking for, for the, the amenities that they're gonna put, uh, on the properties, you'd reduce that to that one forty-five and change
Yeah.
to get to a total, uh,
Reduction.
reduction of eight hundred thousand, which equates to the investment in, uh, the amenities that, that the CF Investments is putting into, uh, this community.
Yes, you said it perfectly, John. Thank you.
Okay. Others have thoughts?
Um, I just want to emphasize how much park development costs, how much, uh, you know, we're talking, we just replaced only a playground at, um, Willow Run, and that was eighty thousand dollars for just the playground portion. And we're talking about serving more than five hundred people with parks that would have, you know, more space available. So I think that that's a really significant reduction. Um, I mean, if we look at just the splash pad, um, development that we had recently, just the splash pad portion was four hundred thousand. So the fees weren't set to just rake in as much as possible. They were really set to reflect the actual cost of building, um, parkland. So I think, I mean, that's more than I was hoping to go down. I think, um, just to reflect the cost of actually building, um, improvements in parkland that would serve, um, the residents of, uh, this development.
Yeah, I totally appreciate that. I was trying to figure out how to wrap in the amount that they would be investing in their onsite and not discount any further beyond that, but that's a big investment of eight hundred thousand. So yeah, I mean, I, I totally appreciate that. Heidi, did you have an option that, on Aaron's list, or your own concoction of an option that you were thinking?
Um, I, I like the, um, the reduction for the units that are more affordable, um, to do the incentive toward that, and I like the incentive for there to be onsite amenities, so I like the credit for that. Um, I, I guess another option would be, um, have the payments due over time, uh, instead of upfront. Um, you know, it'll take a little bit of time for us to plan where we're gonna make improvements. There's some things on the calendar, um, like pickleball, and, uh, we have plans for additional tennis courts at Baccan. But it'll take a little bit of time to get those improvements built, so we don't need the money immediately. I'm not sure if Sean has anything to add about that, or I don't wanna put him on the spot, but if he has anything to add.
Um, I would, you know, selfishly say, uh, we would like to have all of the park development fees. But I understand the, the, um, importance of this development. And, you know, looking at what we've got coming up down the road, just the development of Baccan Park, I mean, just to get, just to get the rest of the park to grade so that we can actually develop it, we're looking at about four hundred thousand dollars. And this just provides an opportunity for us to do some of the development that we, that we need to do coming up, and that, a-again, doesn't include, um, doesn't include the twenty-plus acre park, which is, you know, several years down the road, but gives us an opportunity to do that without having to borrow for it, or put it on the, you know, ultimately put it on the tax levy. So, um, I mean, I, I feel personally like, uh, our fees are pretty fair and probably a little bit lower than, than other communities, and I, I just, I, 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 like I said, I understand the importance of this development, and I, I welcome this development as, as the rest of us do, the rest of the board, and, 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 um, I just feel like we should take advantage of the opportunities that are provided.
Yeah.
Alright, other board members have comments? Go ahead, Troy.
Yeah, if I, I, I have a couple questions. Um, uh, the amenities that they're gonna have at the, the, the new facility being proposed and, uh, current ones, are, are, are those open to the public now? Uh, do you have to be a resident to enjoy those types of, um, amenities that are available?
Uh, those are private.
Uh, I'm sorry, what was that?
Uh, they are private amenities within the building itself.
Okay, so...
I guess the thinking generally is, uh, with the private amenities, uh, is that, uh, generally speaking, uh, there's credit for that sort of amenity because, uh, those tenants then, uh, generally aren't, uh, in need of any additional, um, outside public amenities per se. Obviously, it's always great to have as, as many parks as we can, that's, that's for sure, but, uh, but, uh, bottom line is, yes, in this particular development, uh, there, there are no public, uh, park areas.
Alright, that, thank you. Uh, uh, another question is, is, um, uh, what other incentives, um, have been approved, or are you looking for in addition to this, uh, for the development?
Um, are we, are you talking about, uh, TIP request, or?
Yes, yes, a-any, any other public funding, if we wanna call it that, that you'd be looking at in addition to this request, uh, for reduced, um, uh, park, um, uh, fees?
Uh, we were negotiating initially, uh, prior to, uh, this proposal with, uh, the village here on a TIP agreement. And, um, I don't know if, um, I, if Matt could speak to that as to, to what extent the, the board has been, uh, up to speed on that? Uh, is, is that what, uh, you're asked, might be confused here too, but...
Yeah, the, the boards discussed that in, in, uh, closed session, provided direction.
So, so this would be in addition to that then, Matt, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure there's clarity that we're not swapping one for the other, that this is in addition to the direction that the board has been, has given them, so they're looking for significantly more money than what we've talked about, uh, looking for more money than we previously discussed, basically.
Yes, this is a separate proposal.
Yeah, I think Troy, this, this is a relief from the park funds. This is not related to development, putting in the improvements, the roads, et cetera. So it's a little, little different because of just the sheer size of the, the development, I think, is, is where the numbers start to get significant, uh, to what, um, the Franks have shared, uh, this evening. So that's, I think that's why they're back with, with this piece.
I, I, I understand that, I understand that, and also there, there's gonna be an influx of more people, and, and in reality are probably gonna need more park space because we have more people, uh, in our community. The nice thing is they do have some onsite amenities that are available to both, that sounds like the public and, uh, and, and folks that live in those, uh, those particular, um, uh, buildings. So, uh, I, I just wanna make sure I understood that this is in addition to what's already been talked about. Uh, two separate items, but it's still adding those monies together to come up with a, uh, an agreement.
Correct. Other comments from board members?
Um, so I guess we don't want this to prevent, uh, this important development that'll bring a lot of different types of housing and affordability to our community, but we also have a priority to provide quality park space to those residents as well. But I think, I guess my questions for the Franks or their attorney, um, it seems we're willing to negotiate on our price. I guess is there, um, is there, can you say the same for, for your side, or how, do you have a, a preference proposal? Uh, obviously, your preference is probably your proposal, but, um, any, I, thoughts on how we can meet in the middle?
Yeah, so I, uh, have, uh, you know, had, had discussions with, with my lender too, of course, and, um, uh, in, uh, this value issue is something that has just come to light in the past week. Uh, and, uh, by value that is, um, the purchase of the lands now, uh, with the park fee element included in, um, has, um, the, uh, the initial cost, uh, plus or minus, uh, fifty percent or so higher than what it will appraise out at. So that we're wrestling with in addition to what, uh, we felt was a fair offer, uh, prior to that. Uh, so, um, I really don't have a lot of room to negotiate is the, is the point right now. Uh, anything beyond that, and, uh, I would have to have, um, discussions, uh, with, uh, with my lender, and, um, uh, we, we would have to have a, a hard talk with, um, uh, with, with evaluation, uh, uh, expert too, just to, just to make sure that, um, uh, that the, the value is not gonna be a major detriment, uh, to, to the, to the overall funding package. A lot of times, if there's, um, a flag regarding any values, uh, that we, uh, that we have for a given project, uh, that's, uh, a, a lot more difficult than to overcome, uh, when you're, uh, looking at having, uh, uh, the lending package go out to additional partners, uh, which is what this deal would have to be. So I have my initial lender, who will, will be a local lender, but they will then have to take on partners for a project of this size. So it gets fully scrutinized two, three times over, so, so, so that's the... So it gets fully scrutinized two, three times over. So, so, so that's the latest, uh, issue that, that we have with it. Uh, didn't mean to get long there, but, um, uh, but there are two elements to it right now that I'm having to wrestle with, so.
So Craig, then even if we, we reduce this, whatever the board decides. And say we staggered, uh, changed the, when the payments were due, that wouldn't help you because of this valuation piece. When you're looking at the, the land, the park fees and all that put together from, from a financing perspective.
Yes, on the surface, that would be the issue.
Other, uh, comments, uh, from board members?
So from basically, if I just heard all that correctly. Then what, what's being proposed is what you need to make your funding work.
Yes, correct. That's how we arrived at it.
That could hurt the village though, because we won't be able to have the quality of parks. That, um, our residents have come to expect. So that kinda, kinda puts us in a difficult spot. And anything that we do here as well, um, should be looked at or could be looked at for future, um, PUDs as well. So it's, I definitely appreciate everybody's comments thus far. And I'm, I, I think this is an important development. And I also think that it's, there was a reason why we raised our park fees. And there are, we do have projects on the horizon that we were looking to as well. So I'm not really sure what the answer is right now.
So, so I think if another, uh, uh, or one of our, our biggest points here is, uh, that, uh, we feel, uh, that, that this development. Uh, should not be looked at as a, uh, um, it, it has quite a few differences as compared to a, a single family development. Um, we feel that the, the park fees, uh, are, are a reasonable amount, uh, for a single family, uh, development. Uh, if you look comparatively, our project with the average amount of occupants per units, uh, being, uh, uh, near fifty percent of the, uh, standard single family in Cottage Grove. In addition to that, the number of children being, uh, significantly less than that percentage wise. Along with the fact that we are providing a significant, significant amount of amenities onsite for the developments residents. That a single family neighborhood also does not provide is how we came to the numbers in the proposal that you see. And, uh, our, uh, what we feel is, uh, uh, a very strong justification for the proposed numbers. Well, if you just got equated to, uh, like Jesse pointed out early on, um, a value on a per unit basis. A multifamily project like this, uh, is, and it has been valued in that range, uh, for 10, 15 years, believe it or not. It hasn't gone up substantially, but in that, in that eight to 12,000 per unit range. When a single family development, that lot is valued at a hundred thousand. So that four eight hundred, uh, that we would have for a park fee for a single family development. Can be easily absorbed, uh, and doesn't affect evaluation. Uh, but in a multifamily project like this, uh, it, uh, is something that of course, uh, just can't be absorbed. Uh, and, um, and, uh, you know, the, uh, the, the, we, we of course definitely appreciate parks too. And, and, and we, uh, feel that generally speaking, this is a, a pretty substantial, uh, even on a per unit basis. Uh, input into, into the parks. Um, I mean, this is still, uh, at a level, uh, very close to what your park fees were in the past. For all, uh, types of housing. Uh, so, uh, again, it's, it's something that, um, uh, you know, we feel that, uh, uh, is, is fair with, uh, with what we have for an overall scenario here.
Um, one other thing that I'd note too is just. Here if we use it, um, as a basis for what we do in the future. Um, I'm concerned about the quality of amenities. Um, I think that, uh, from what I can tell, like the amenities in this development are, um, are, are good. I mean, are, you've put a lot of thought into this whole development and the amenities that are there. Um, I'm just concerned that other developers might not stand up to the same level that we expect. Um, just as a side comment type of thing, I make that. And if we went based off of our, our fees from last year. At nineteen oh four per unit, that would put that at five hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and seventy six dollars. Which is a eight hundred and one thousand dollar discount, basically. And, uh, I guess. Is that kind of what you were getting at, Sarah? Or was it opposite?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately I was trying to get to the eight hundred dollar discount being the most we would discount. Because that's the investment they're making. So however, and it sounds like we can mathematically get there in various ways.
Right. I mean, I, uh, guess, I guess I'm up for hearing what other board members say. But we've all kind of said stuff already. And I don't know how to get us all together on the same page, um, that makes it acceptable for everyone at this point. Um, so I guess in this one instance, because it is kind of all the same development. I would, I would be amenable to just charging the nineteen oh four per unit rate. For the two hundred and sixty nine units, just to make it easy numbers, I guess. And, um, then we could look further in the future about what, what process we want to do for these types of situations. And, um, nowhere to go going forward. For this one instance, I guess that's where I'm at.
So Melissa, you're at, uh, two sixty nine nineteen oh four. That's, uh, five, twelve, one, seven, six, if I do my math right. Is that what you're, you're throwing out there for the board to consider?
Yes. And I can make it a formal motion, I guess. If, if that's wanted at this point, but I didn't, in case there was more discussion to be had.
Feel free if you want.
Okay, I will make a motion then to, um, to, uh, uh, approve a request from CF Investments for reduction in park fees to nineteen hundred and four dollars per unit. For the two hundred and sixty nine units totaling five hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and seventy six dollars owed. For Cottage Grove Commons Phase Two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion second, um, further discussion.
I just have one comment that parks are an important infrastructure for every community. And I believe we should treat it as an infrastructure. And we're not negotiating the water and sewer impact fees because that's how much it costs to maintain water and sewer. Um, and this is how much it costs to build parks that impact, um, new residents. And I don't think those improvements should be pushed onto the levy because we wouldn't be making these improvements unless it was for five hundred plus new people. So I'm not in favor of this, but, um, we reached a negotiation it seems. So I guess that's just where I stand.
I can just, one comment there, if I, I may, it's just, uh, in, in this situation, it comes down to what the ordinance says unfortunately. You know, that the impact fees for the water and sewer are, are not negotiable. And the park fees are not negotiable for everything but for planning and development. And I think, um, that the board also wants to direct staff, um, Aaron and, and, and Sean. And we can maybe come back with, um, more of a policy on how to address these requests in the, in the future. Uh, before Cottage Grove Commons first or second phase. Uh, other than some of the, uh, senior housing. Artisan Square, I believe, is the only other PUD that involves residential development that we've had in the last, you know, six years or so. So the, this is just not something that's come up before, but, um, I, I, I think we need a, some, some, at least, at least some guidelines for the board to consider as a, as a group for moving forward. And we, we also could consider a ordinance amendment that, that locks things in better as well. Those are a couple of options.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Matt, too. And then developers that are looking at proposals will, um, you know, it'll be more upfront on what they can expect in these and Cottage Grove. So that's a good idea.
Matt, just to add on to that, I'd also like to see if we can leverage what other communities maybe that have experienced more of these larger developments and how they handle this. I'm certain that's what, uh, you guys will do anyway, but I just want to make that, uh, known. So any other comments regarding, uh, the motion on the floor? All right, having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
I don't know.
Okay. Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right. And we'll be on to. We're going to get my papers all messed up is what I'm moving on to. Item eight, C is discuss and consider the liquor license application, uh, for a licensing year, uh, twenty, um, excuse me, July twentieth through June twenty twenty one. For QuickTrip, uh, for DBA, uh, shopping, stop and go. Uh, store number fifteen seventeen at four zero one West Cottage Grove. And QuickTrip, uh, DBA, QuickTrip, uh, store number fifteen twelve at one one zero, uh, North Windsor Avenue. Uh, Lisa, you want to comment on these or this?
So these applications. Switch over of Stop and Go, or Stop and Go is being bought out by QuickTrip. So Stop and Go will be surrendering their license. Um, so it's basically changing, um, ownership. So new license need to be applied for. Um, background checks have been completed and they are all in compliance and ready for approval.
Okay, any questions from the board members?
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the liquor license application for license year July twenty twenty to June twenty twenty for QuickTrip Incorporated. Uh, DBA Stop and Go number one, five, one, seven, four oh one West Cottage Grove Road. And QuickTrip Incorporated, uh, again, uh, DBA QuickTrip number one, five, one, two. At, uh, eleven oh one North Windsor Avenue.
Second.
All right, motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Item D then is discuss and consider the cigarette license application for a licensing year July twenty twenty through June twenty twenty one. For QuickTrip DBA Stop and Go, uh, number fifteen seventeen at, uh, four oh one West Cottage Grove Road. To Quick and QuickTrip, uh, DBA QuickTrip number one, five, one, two, two. Uh, at one zero, one, one zero at North Windsor Ave. Lisa, same kind of scenario?
Yep, same scenario.
Rather than reread it all.
All right.
I'll second.
All right. And I think I'm sure Lisa's gotten that. Um, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, then we'll move on to reports from village boards, commissions and committees. First one being, uh, Public Works. That would be myself. Um, so we met on, on November third. And covered our, oh, continuing, uh, items around the Glacial Drummond Bike Path. Just continuing with the, uh, easement acquisitions there. Uh, gonna bring the Bike Path Committee back together as well and, uh, discuss the, um, uh, crossing over highway, uh, Main Street or Highway N. As well as just an update overall on the progress. Uh, talked about the, uh, bus road, at least bus road and Highway BB project. There's still a lot of unknowns there because it depends on where the developments are, particularly, um, Shitty Grove. For that particular one, we're waiting to hear back from there and then, um, designing that intersection, uh, and safe. And, and plan for the, at least a ten year period and then have to work back with the county and the school as well. So again, not a lot there. Just, uh, JJ gave a quick update on the budget process. Kevin giving an update on the engineer's report and again JJ on, uh, the, uh, Public Works Director Report. Set the next meeting, uh, for December first. And that is about it. JJ, did I miss anything?
Nope, I think you got it all.
All right. All right, then we'll move on to the library planning committee. Melissa?
Um, we just reviewed the survey and, um, worked on the presentation and report to the board. Our next meeting is December second.
All right. Thanks, Melissa. Uh, moving then on to community development authority. Jeff asked me to cover this. Uh, Sarah had a work commitment, so I stepped in for her for, for one on November ninth. The CDA Committee so covered, um, just the initial format for the marketing firm interviews. Need clarity on how those are going to flow through. We decided that kind of, uh, draw names on the hat for as far as the order. There was discussion about whether or not it would be closed session or not. We also covered the MADREP, um, guide advertising opportunity for twenty twenty one. guide advertising opportunity for twenty twenty-one. The authority approved that and again, it's the same format. It'll be a different look, but same format of half-page in the MADREP as last year. And then the authority was given just an overview of potentially a extension of tax increment financing for District Number Five for affordable housing programs. This is something that's in the state statute that allows this and so authority was aware of this statute as well as the kind of the ins and outs and how that would work because that tends to be run by the CDA when if that's what occurs where there's funds available through that statute that tid closing or extension before it's closed. So just an awareness there. So the next meeting is December fourteenth on that. Matt or Aaron, did I miss anything there? Or get anything wrong?
Let's have a good.
Okay. Next then is the Ad Hoc Sustainability Committee. Heidi, I'll turn that one over to you, please.
Sure. So we had a presentation from Eagle Point Solar. They're a residential and commercial solar products company. They build roof and ground mounted systems, so they talked about their services. We also had a representative from Alliant that spoke about a renewable energy partners program where you have customer hosted energy production. So the committee is going to keep looking into land that we could consider to host like a solar farm type of area. And we're also going to look at incentive examples for EV-ready homes and other solar ordinances kind of wrapped into that as kind of policy recommendations we may have. Dane County also has a grant program that we're going to investigate. The deadline's coming up pretty quick in January, but it's for solar efficiency efforts and electric vehicles and infrastructure. So it's something we might be able to apply for in a fairly short notice. We have another resident that's very excited about our committee. All of our spots are filled, but he's planning to attend all of the meetings anyway, so I guess it's good we have some enthusiasm. I did have some technical problems during the meeting, so I don't know, John, if you have anything to add? We meet again on December eighth at six.
Okay, sorry, I had to mute. So I think the only other thing, the RFP, we talked about the grant program, you covered that. I think you got them all.
Yeah.
So it's a lot about lots of opportunity, I think, for us and again, this board approved a resolution, so the committee is kind of trying to spearhead ideas to achieve that and then get it in front of the board for consideration. So there's a great lot of good energy and definitely a lot of good ideas flowing around and there are a lot of opportunities for us to take advantage of not only like grant program, but other programs that, you know, Alliant and other groups have that are available. So it's it's an exciting time, I think, for communities to to kind of push for and being more environmentally sound. Then we have next then is the Plant Commission and so we had covered the two items here will probably open up since I'm certain that franks are still on, so we'll get those going right now before I go through the rest of the the meeting. So we have two items around, one around the precision implementation plan for CF Investments for their Phase Two of Cottage Grove Commons. And then associated with that is the final proposed plat associated with that phase two. So I don't know if Craig or Corey want to kind of walk through that for the board?
Sure, so back here again, Craig with Corey and Mike's available too. And felt what we do is initially go through the project overview that project-wise, it hasn't changed to any extent from what you've already seen. There are some engineering changes and a few other things that we tweaked from the prior meetings. Mike will get into that after we have Corey put on a pretty brief just presentation since I think all of you have seen it and if you'd like to see anything in addition, feel free to feel free to let us know and we can go through a little more of the presentation itself, but but it's something that from the first meeting to now, I think we've made progress in the areas that that we needed to. There wasn't really a whole lot that we had to address. The traffic is always a concern and that's something that I think we have identified and resolved here. So I think what I'll do is just hand it over to Corey here and he can go through the PowerPoint for you and Mike can follow.
All right, so we'll just do a quick overview and refresher for everyone here. As my dad mentioned, the our overall project remains the same with a few changes to the site plan, which our engineer Mike Hawkins will go over after this. I do also have all the floor plans, elevations and material sheets available for viewing as well if anyone would like to go over that after this as well. So in summary, the project we're proposing is a mixed-use development comprised of mid-market rate apartment units, affordable condominiums and office retail space. The mixed-use building with internal parking structure consists of one hundred and fifteen residential units and twenty-seven hundred square feet of commercial space. To the south will be two thirty-three unit apartments with underground parking and a ten-unit townhome with underground parking. The other aspect of the development is the seventy-eight affordable condominium units consists, you know, two twenty-seven unit garden style with underground parking, elevator and three eight-unit townhome style with underground parking. Total projected value, the proposal is over fifty million. Here we have outlined the location of the development in red. Located just south of Cottage Grove Commons Phase One. As you can see, the corner of Gaston End directly to the north of that. Looking at the site plan. Parking is one item that has been addressed since the last meeting. We have added additional parking stalls to put the development beyond parking requirements for this particular development. Starting on the northwest corner of the lot. You see the eight-unit, three-eight-unit townhome condo buildings. These will be identical to the four-eight-unit condominium buildings in Phase One of Cottage Grove Commons. To the south of that, we have two twenty-seven unit garden-style condominium buildings. These buildings are one-story units with underground parking and elevator in the building. Prices on these will be starting at a hundred and sixty thousand and a full range of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, two-bedroom plus den and three-bedroom units. Having a large variety of layouts and price points. Heading across the east side of the street, we have our mixed-use building with the one hundred and fifteen units of residential twenty-seven hundred square feet of commercial parking lot and parking ramp access on the south side of the building. To the south of that, you see Limestone Pass, which we will be running east to west, which lines up with Limestone Pass across from Highway N. We then have two thirty-three unit apartment buildings which will have full access to the indoor and rooftop amenities of the mixed-use building. And at the southwest of the lot, next to the retention pond, we have the ten-unit townhome-style building with underground parking as well. A couple other items to highlight would be the outdoor amenity area at the southwest corner between the ten-unit and twenty-seven-unit condo. Another item to mention is a proposed potential pool area to the north of the existing retention pond and outdoor amenity in Phase One of Cottage Grove Commons. And here we have our renderings. So to the north here, you see our current mixed-use building as part of Phase One and the four-eight-unit condominium buildings which are currently under construction. This will then roll into the next set of condominiums proposed in Phase Two. North Windsor Ave will be continued all the way through north and south to connect with North Windsor Ave where it's currently stubbed to the south and Limestone Pass will be ran off of North Windsor Ave to the east. As you can see, it then lines up with Limestone Pass on the other side of Highway N. Here we have a view from the southeast showing more of a view from Highway N. So these would be the two thirty-three unit apartments in blue and the mixed-use buildings in the north. Here we have a view from the southwest by the retention pond. Here we have a view from North Windsor Ave directly from the south. This view would be from the location where North Windsor Ave is currently stubbed to just north of the gas station. And here we have a view from the north, which would be from the current end of Phase One of Cottage Grove Commons. To the right, you see the condominiums and on the left, you see the retention pond and then the mixed-use building. And then here we have more of a zoomed-in view of the one hundred and fifteen-unit mixed-use building. As you can see, it's similar in style to the building in Phase One with the four-story internal parking ramp. This parking ramp consists of over two parking stalls per unit. Benefits of this is allows tenants to park on their own floor for ease of access. It also allows for a very large fourteen thousand-plus square foot rooftop amenity which is similar to the first building in Cottage Grove Commons. And with that, I think we will send you over to Mike Hawkins to go over the changes since we last met. And if you have any other additional questions regarding the development after that, we can go into further detail and answer any questions you have.
Okay. Mike Dawkins here with Snyder Associates and happy to touch on a couple of engineering items that came up after the GDP supplemental. The detention basin that's in the southwest corner has been increased in size as it relates to volume. We're with a review letter from MSA. There's a downstream fifteen-inch pipe that we cannot release. What the ordinance would allow for rate, the speed at which the water leaves, we have to detain it longer because the fifteen-inch pipe kind of will control downstream flooding. So we've made some adjustments on the pond and the side slopes to make that bigger to address some of the comments made by MSA. Another item that MSA prepared, traffic analysis and came up with some recommended improvements, which we certainly agree with their assumptions, didn't see anything wrong with any of those other than the fact that turn lanes, right turn lane at Gaston Road, one at School Road, they're recommending that the this development extend a right turn lane, southbound right turn lane onto Gaston Road. The way I read the report, a hundred and twenty-five feet beyond what's there right now, so that there's room for four or five cars to be stacked up, taking a right turn so not not to hinder street through traffic. So in talking to Craig, that's something that Craig's willing to add that we're estimating approximately fifty thousand dollars a cost to the infrastructure improvements. And another item to address was the safety of pedestrians at limestone crossing of Highway N. We're proposing one location on the south side of Limestone Pass to connect to the east side. I understand there's a a project to extend the bike path up the east side of the road into twenty twenty-one. The MSA recommendations are to put some beacon or some notice signs, overhead signage. I think you've got something in your packet that shows kind of a representation of what they're calling for in that area just to make make people alert that they're pedestrian crossing at that location. We did not have a basis. We haven't done that type of project out of our Madison office in the past and MSA was nice enough to throw some numbers together off of what they've seen on some DOT projects and that was at this point showing about thirty-five thousand dollars of improvement cost. Not so much the cost. We certainly want everybody to be safe, but just the coordination of that, the installation of that with the path to the on the east side, the project the village has going on. I think the coordination of that and installation of that is tough for us to do not. At this point, we coordinate and Craig's project with the infrastructure on the east side and when that path, that path actually can get connected. Unless they're done at the same time, there's some issues to work out there. So I think from a direction standpoint, we'd like to see that crossing be part of and included in the project that the village has. And I'll let Craig speak to the you know, from a financing standpoint, what that means to him and his proposal, but those are the engineering items that I think needed some discussion and or to point out that it popped up since the GDP approval. Craig, did you want to add anything?
Well, I think just simply that that was one of the items that in the Plan Commission we were we were discussing and trying to assess how to handle that properly. I mean, we looked at, you know, alternate methods too as far as either crossing there or internally. And I think the consensus was that what MSA recommended made the most sense and of course will present a safe crossing there. Like Mike said, you know, we don't have any experience with what is recommended. And it's to where on the surface, it just makes sense to have that part of the pedestrian path when that's built this next year. And that's, I guess, where we're coming from right now. But, you know, that's something that we didn't come to any agreement at the Plan Commission level, so I wanted to get that solidified here.
Okay, anything else from either Craig, Corey or Mike? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Aaron and then Kevin.
No, I don't believe so. I think they've covered where we're at right now.
All right, thank you. So Aaron, do you want to start and then we'll throw it to Kevin?
Sure, thanks, John. Most of the comments I had at the GDP level have been addressed.
Corey mentioned the parking. We verified the unit counts and types and verified that the amount of parking provided is adequate, meets our minimum requirements from our zoning ordinance. Tweaks the site plan since the GDP level are pretty minimal, but we were able to adjust the landscaping plan also to keep it in compliance with our ordinance. They provided a photometric plan that verifies the lighting is in compliance. And they have managed to get sidewalks on both sides of Limestone Pass through the development. So the conditions I have for the PIP aren't really tasks for the developers so much as just reminders. We want documented with the approval of the first one being, any signage requires its own sign permit. It's not automatically approved via the PUD process. And then just making a note of the exceptions that are being granted. There were the reason that this project was approved as a PUD, that the density exceeds what would have been allowed under MR-12 zoning. The building heights are higher and the number of units in the building is higher. And then as far as the final plat, I did not have any conditions for that, but I believe Kevin had a few.
All right, thanks, Aaron. Kevin, you want to start with?
Yeah, thanks, Sean. I was, I'm not going to go through each one of my comments on the, that should be in, it's in the packet and everything. A lot of these are ones that we've just been working with Mike on, and some of them have been addressed with Mike and his staff as he's been, like he said, he's been working with Eric Thompson at our office and working on stormwater. So that hasn't been, the final ones haven't been like sent in. And, but we've got no, we believe it can all work. Like I said, he's just been working on addressing things as Eric came up with them. A lot of my comments are more detail-oriented, a few utility comments, and then there'll have to be some intersection details. The biggest items on here were the ones that Mike had already commented on regarding the stormwater, which they're working on. And then obviously the traffic information. So, and as far as Mike's, their comments on basically including that crossing with the path project, to my knowledge, that could be done. That would be, I guess, up to however the village wants to work with them on that or on any agreements or anything. To my understanding, most of the plans for that path are done. When it was split, it was, they kind of did plans for the entire thing, and then it was split into two, and just a portion of it was built a year ago. So, yeah, we can, we can provide information to them or, you know, add to those plans either way. So however it gets coordinated, we could work with them on that as well and the village as well. So I guess I'll leave it up to you guys or John, if you want. I know you had heard it, but I do have Brian Hubricks on the phone if there's any specific questions on the, on the traffic information. Just because I know there was a few of the board members hadn't heard it or anything. But if there is some specific questions or if you want him to do a quick briefing of it or something, just to give people, he's here to, he could do that as well.
I don't think it would hurt for the board to hear what Brian has. And he was pretty succinct at the plan commission, so we can certainly cover it now.
All right. Great, thanks, John. For you guys who don't know, my name is Brian Hubricks. I'm a traffic engineer with MSA, worked very closely with Kevin on a lot of products with you guys. Basically, just a quick background, we did a traffic impact analysis for the development, which included the Conde Stroh Commons, moving on out, both phases of the Conde Stroh Commons. One of the challenges with the study, obviously, in the COVID era right now, traffic is very different than it was. I've reached out to some state officials, and right now, to kind of put in perspective, in April, when we did our first shutdown, we saw about a fifty percent reduction in traffic. Right now, we're at about a ten to twenty percent reduction in traffic. So it makes everything a little bit challenging. To help get a better idea of how, what these developments are going to occur in the future, when we get back to what we feel is normal, we were lucky enough to have counted at school road intersection back in 2016. So it wasn't perfect, but we were able to take a look at those counts and recount at both School Road and Gaston and kind of compare how those volumes were. Just to kind of give you a quick highlight of that is in the PM peak, from 2016 and 2020, we had about a twenty percent reduction, which kind of follows what the state was seeing on their major materials. What we found interesting was in the AM peak, we saw a forty percent reduction on the traffic on Conde Highway N. To kind of put that in perspective, I think we had eight hundred northbound trips in 2016, and that was down to four hundred trips. So we decided to do as part of the study, we took the, basically took the 2016 as kind of our baseline as a, just assuming we're going to, we're definitely going to get back there and then brought up all the traffic at Gaston Road from our counts. Just if you guys were wondering too, we did trip generation for the Summit Building. We know that's empty. That's going to be a major generator. And we did include that in the study to figure out how that was operating. The next step of our study, what we did is we looked at an operational analysis, and that looked delay and queuing. Mike had mentioned that. We talked a little bit about the length of the storage length. That's the one thing we wanted to focus on. What the results of the study did show is that, to no surprise, that we already seen queues blocking on that southbound right turn lane, both at School and Gaston. And with the addition of some of the trips that we're going to see on that west side of the road, that's just getting, going to get longer. So we had a, we had a situation to start, and we're just going to get a little bit, get a little bit worse as more volume and more development occurs on the west side of Conde Stroh Highway N. So included in that study, the final recommendation was for the village to consider making both of those southbound right turn lanes longer to include both, at least some additional storage and some decel that improves the state's safety of the intersection and also the long-term operational ability at both of those movements. The last thing I also wanted to mention that we talked about and we included on the limestone path exhibit for the crosswalk was the modification of the intersection of basically right where limestone comes in, is that merge where that lane drops. And there's some challenges with that situation because there's a lot going on. So what we had proposed as part, one of our concept layouts was extending that pavement width and turning that southbound, one of those, that outside southbound lane into a dedicated right turn lane. So it's almost a drop lane, but we also included some overhead, recommended some overhead signing and pavement markings to help, kind of help that transition, so you don't get that last-second shift at that location. That's kind of the highlights on that. Operationally, the intersections were working well, but obviously will be something we continue to want to monitor as traffic volumes get back to normal and more development occurs in that area. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. I know there are a lot of technical stuff there, so.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Thanks. Are we looking at decreasing the speed limit in that area?
That was not assessed as part of the traffic impact analysis, was not reviewed. I would likely say that I would, yeah, that that wasn't reviewed. You'd have to do a speed study and truly get a feel for traffic to really get a good recommendation on that one.
If we do have the pedestrians going across that limestone pass, and right now it's thirty-five, is, like, is a speed limit reduction better for pedestrians to cross where there aren't, where it's not a controlled intersection? I don't know. Like, I'm just concerned because of the speed. People do go faster than thirty-five there, but there will be developments that might slow people down a little. I don't know what you've seen in other areas or how that all works.
I would agree. There is slower speeds, safe, increase safety for collisions. Let's be honest, you know, there is a percentage of the fastest vehicles traveling that the injuries are more severe. That's an obvious. I won't say that, you know, that it's a great or bad situation, but one thing that we did want to promote in that exhibit, if you took a look, is really emphasize people are going to cross at that intersection with one development on the other side. So how do we make it the most safe? Reducing the speed would be one consideration. But we also included those overhead, our B's, not just the sign-mounted ones, but the overhead to really draw attention to those pedestrian things, knowing that even if we don't do anything, we're going to be watching people run Frogger out there. So we wanted to really make sure that we provided some safety benefits as part of that with that as well, to mitigate those same concerns that you have.
Okay, thanks.
And anybody in the other board members have questions, comments?
This is Heidi. I have a comment on the crossing. I do think it is important, and we wouldn't need this crossing at that location if it were not for this development here. We wouldn't be just adding a crossing at Limestone Pass. So that's why I think it should be included in a condition for, for the development. And people are, I mean, convenience is a factor here, that this development is right off the interstate. But people are used to driving seventy-five, eighty miles an hour on the interstate. So I think that extra signage and lighting is important there. I do have another traffic question about the intersection of Windsor and Gaston. It is kind of a rural road, and I was thinking as someone's traveling west on Gaston, and then they wait to turn onto Windsor, cars will pass in the gravel on the right, which is a lot of wear and tear and maintenance. And I don't even think cars are supposed to pass on the right if they can't stay on the paved shoulder. But it said something about how we could restrike that there. I was wondering if.
Yeah, we looked at that kind of as a, just an overall concept of the width that we saw out there. We didn't have traffic numbers there. We projected, but we didn't do traffic counts and analyze it. But that was, that was something that we had noted, and we put a short section in the study that basically said, it appears that there could be some configuration with an existing lane with the try to bring at least a left-hand storage space painted, dedicated in that, close to that area. You're not going to get, with that proximity intersection, we're not going to get a huge storage link. But even a car or two or just that safe pullover is something that if there's room to do, it should be considered at that location.
Yeah, it might help with backup coming off and in that right turn lane by school grounds too. Like, it might help move traffic along there if you have five or six cars waiting for one to turn left. That would maybe help that flow. So that, that's something that could be adjusted later if we, at a fairly minimal cost, since it's just restriping, or is that something that we should consider now?
I, I was, based on the traffic impact analysis, I was going to be addressing the right turn lane and onto Gaston from southbound, and also looking at that striping and confirming what Brian brought to the attention in the memorandum. So those improvements will be outlined in the plan set that we resubmit.
Okay.
It's my understanding the school road stuff will be addressed by a separate project or development or this development won't have anything to do with extending the right turn lane on School Road, is my understanding.
Okay, thank you. My other question switches gears a little bit. The parking lots for the thirty-three-unit buildings are fairly large. So I'm thinking about runoff from cars, you know, pollutants and salt and such. Is there an infiltration area off of those parking lots where that can go? Or is all of that going into the storm sewer?
The only infiltration area due to soil testing between bedrock and poorer soils, meaning clays and things that won't infiltrate or material that won't infiltrate, is up where Outlet Two is. There's a small strip of land that had some decent soils in it that we're going to promote and do what we can up in that area in between two of the eight-unit buildings. But the rest of the development go into a storm sewer system. Storm sewer system will drain to Outlet One, which will be a large wet basin, which is designed to, for water quality reasons, to, for the sediment loading and the oil and grease trapping before it heads downstream or to the southwest. So the water quality component of it is being addressed with the wet basin. But there will be no, there's not really a chance to infiltrate water due to the subsurface.
The, and the Outlet One grew since our last presentation, the infiltration basin to accommodate a hundred-year event and slow.
Yeah, that's correct.
Sending water down farther.
The footprint grew slightly in size, but we also went from four to one or twenty-five percent cross slope to a thirty-three percent cross slope, which created more volume opportunity to store more water in that location. We changed our outfall pipe from a twenty-four-inch, I think it's down to eighteen or fifteen now, but we choked down the size of pipe leaving Outlet One, so the water's being held longer in Outlet One, so that the downstream system functions as it is, as it does today.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there questions or comments from board members? Otherwise, this is, both these items are discussed and consider for the precise implementation plan as well as then the final plat. Any other questions or comments on those?
Does the, I'm trying to see, does the recommendations include, I see it includes the pedestrian crossing at limestone, and so that would be in the developer agreement at the expense of the developer? Is that how it's currently written in your, if we were to approve this with your recommendations, that would be in there? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think what they're asking for is just coordination for that, which I think makes sense.
I heard him ask for the village to do it. Did I hear wrong?
Ah, you may. No, you're correct. They're asking coordination and the expense. So the board can decide, however we decide.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I think what, what, I don't know if Mike mentioned that or not, as far as how we envision it here. We would still be incorporating the crosswalk itself as part of our development. But the overhead element and coordinating that would be done at a later date in theory when the pedestrian path on the east side of the road is incorporated. If you kind of follow that. Mike can maybe explain that a little further.
Well, there's some great coordination, but I think what I'm hearing is the cost associated with the overhead. In the condition right now, it's saying that that's a development cost. And, you know, helping us out or being familiar with that type of design, MSA, I've heard MSA offer to provide that information and/or include it in the plan set, but in their plan set. But to me, it's, the funding component of it is, is written now that it's, that's your cost, Craig. So if you're not comfortable with that, then I guess I think we need to make that statement.
Yeah, I guess that's, that was the position here along with the course. You know, not just the funding, but the installation, that's something that, again, we just don't have the experience in incorporating. So I guess that's, I guess, our position right now on that.
Kevin, MSA works with, I'm seeing contractors that would certainly be able to handle that portion of it?
Yeah, Brian's team would end up, you know, basically designing that and, you know, putting the plans together wherever to put, put toward it. I guess I was, in my mind, I guess, when I was thinking about, you know, us assisting and helping, I mean, obviously, we don't have a problem doing that. I guess I was still thinking of it as a developer cost, but still just doing it as part of the, whether it was part of the village project or whatever, is, is what I was thinking as well. So.
whether it was part of the village project or whatever is, is what I was thinking as well, so.
So the, so the design would not, the design cost wouldn't be on, is what you're thinking of that be? Is that where the sticking point is for, for you, Craig? Or is the sticking point the overall cost of adding the crosswalk in?
Well, I think kind of both when, you know, when I step back. I mean, it's still, there's a little more clarity right now in what, in what we're looking at doing there. But for the same token, you know, we don't have the experience level with, with, you know, incorporating it. And I would not have a problem working with the village on a cost sharing or something, depending on what we end up with there. Mike also mentioned that conceivably there are grants that, you know, that could be involved in something like that. So like I said, I guess it was a combination of both that little apprehensive.
Okay, so all right, we understand where you guys are coming from. That's, that's good. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Where, where does this timeline, sorry, quick, where does the timeline fit with the bike path? And, you know, if we were to try to coordinate that, JJ, are you on or maybe Aaron knows? Is it at all see, think of, thinkable that it could be done at the same time or?
I guess I can. Oh, I was just going to jump in and I guess just say that, I mean, there is some funding we are looking at for that park grant. So some of it was gonna depend upon that if, and obviously I know the county's budget was, I think, just recently adopted or whatever. So we have to, you know, that would be an application process. And then once, to see if we could get that, and then the plan was to still do it next year. It's just to see if we could get the funding for that as well. So I don't know an exact timeframe based on that.
Okay, thanks.
I guess if I can comment, that, that, you know, it's an important development for the village and for the Franks. It's because of the growth of the, it's because of the development that there's this need for, you know, the signage and public safety and stuff and, and, you know, we're, we're reducing part fees, we're giving, you know, negotiating some TID monies. And I'm just not sure that, that we're in a position to share if it wasn't for the development. I don't think we would have the need to have any special signage or anything at, at Limestone Pass. That's just, just my opinion. I certainly want to see the project move forward. So.
Someone else is chiming in there too as well?
Yeah, it's Melissa. I was just gonna note that I agree with Heidi and I agree with Troy that if, if this development wasn't going in, we wouldn't need a crossing at Limestone Pass and try to make it as, as safe as possible for the residents there. While they could go on North Windsor to Gaston, we all know that that's not how people work if they take the shortest route possible. And so we need to make it as safe as possible. And I think that, that that is part of this development and should be part of the developer agreement as well. Well, and on another note too, I would say that, that it should be coordinated with our bike path going in. And I don't know if that, if like monies get put towards it or if it's not done at the same time, how that all works. But the, the crossing itself is part of this development and should be part of the agreement.
The other thing we don't know is if the county park grant, if that's still available through the budget and everything. And that would also be in consideration for a, a crossing so you can get bikes and stuff and people across there as well. So that's another consideration, I think, too, for this. Probably all the details probably can be worked out in the developers agreement for this particular item as well as all the others. Is there any other comments from board members or any more questions? If not, then I'll make the motion to approve the proposed precise implementation plan from CFF Investments for Cottage Grove Commons Phase Two to be located south of Cottage Grove Commons Phase One on parcel zero seven one one dash zero four two dash nine five one five dash one with staff conditions as outlined. And then to be worked out, the developers agreement as normal. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
And so I just want to verify that that includes the pedestrian crossing then?
That's one of the conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's, it's in, it's in there. It's also under, it's outlined. So any further discussion? Having heard and done all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. So as part of that, then I'll make a motion then to the proposed final plat for CF Investments for Cottage Grove Commons Phase Two to be located south of Cottage Grove Commons Phase One on parcels, parcel zero seven one one dash zero four two dash nine five one five dash one with staff conditions and comments incorporated.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Any further discussion? Having heard and done all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Any abstain? Motion carries. I certainly am looking forward to this particular development. So I'm very happy that CF Investments has made, is going to make this part of the Cottage Grove.
Yes, and thank you very much. We're, we're excited about it too. So hopefully we can break ground shortly the way it sounds, so.
Hope for good weather.
Yeah.
All right. So the other things that were covered in plant commission and then Melissa chime in if I missed anything. We also covered the zoning amendments for regarding solar panels. Aaron, Aaron kind of outlined this, that they're, they're dated and they don't really cover kind of some of the the new architectural features and things that are available when it comes to solar panels on, on buildings. So because the sustainability committee's got both experts as well as working on, on solar panel considerations, solar power for the village. The plant commission suggested that we defer there or refer this to the sustainability committee to take up. And then certainly, obviously, it'll, it'll come through to the, to the board eventually. And then we had a update presentation for the status of CARPSY, our regional update plan. Aaron walked us through that, which was nice. And then that's all I had on plant commission. Melissa, did I miss anything?
Nope, that was it.
Okay.
Can I just give a plug on CARPSY for a moment?
Uh, you can because it was on there, yes.
So CARPSY updates, it's regional land use plan. And as part of our sewer service area amendment process, they check our land use and our comprehensive plans and the proposals to see if we're in alignment with the regional land use plan. So updating this regional framework is important for us also. And working with our regional partners and many people across Dane County, elected officials have the same types of priorities as we do. Some of the priorities in developing this land use plan fosters resilience to climate change, increases access for all people to jobs, housing and services, conserves farmland, water resources, natural areas and fiscal resources. So this is something that is, you know, important for us as a community, important for the region and our future. And I just want to thank Aaron for working with CARPSY on that and getting that information out to us. So I appreciate it.
And just a plug for Heidi. Heidi's also a representative on CARPSY too. So she's jumping into those meetings as they occur. So thank you Heidi for, for doing that. And I think it's, it's good to have a voice for, for the village. And so appreciate that.
We have December off too for our meetings, so that's exciting.
All right. Then we'll move on to reports from village officers. I just have a, one item on here regarding another nomination, in this case for Julie Flint for the housing task force for the board to consider.
I'll make a motion to approve Julie Flint to the housing task force.
Okay, we have a motion. Melissa, is there a second?
Second.
You missed out Paul. Sarah beat you. Motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard and done all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Any abstain? Motion carries. Then an update from Stanford, I think Rick's on tonight's, and chiming in for us. Rick, you want to keep covering?
Yeah, I have nothing to report. You guys have been keeping us busy, lots of developer agreements going forward. But other than that, no legal updates at this point.
Thanks, Rick. And then COVID nineteen updates. We'll start the, the lists with, start with Lisa. Last time we'll start with Lisa again. If she has anything, I know obviously election's all over, but anything else you, you have related to COVID that you want to share?
I do not have any report. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if I saw Deb on. She has anything?
I'm on. I don't have anything at this point either.
Okay, thanks Deb. All right, then Matt.
I do not have anything either. Maybe, this is a unfortunate new, new normal maybe, but everyone's healthy. So that's good.
I wouldn't say that's unfortunate. Oh, I'd say that's a good thing.
No, I'm saying unfortunate new normal that, that this, you know, agenda item and, and going through it all.
Okay, I, I get, I get what you're putting down.
Yeah.
Chief, favor?
Nothing to report, business as usual at the police department.
All right, thanks chief.
I had a question.
Yes, Melissa.
Thanks. Any new truckloads of toilet paper, chief?
We had to bring that up, huh? It was deposited, yeah, it was deposited at the food pantry last week. They were very happy to get it because there is another shortage looming. So it was donated to a good cause and I guess, yeah, I won't even get into the whole toilet paper and enforcing it. But there was vandalism again this year. If it was just toilet papering, that's one thing. But it digresses into other things and that's why we try to be out there doing as much as we can to educate people and doing our job.
Thanks, chief.
They're limiting, they're limiting purchasing of toilet paper at Costco to one, in case anybody's interested. That's what I've been told. So they don't have enough toilet paper to really do any more frees or anything outside people's homes.
That and homecoming's over, so the, the virtual homecoming. Lieutenant Wagner, anything?
Yes, I do have a report unfortunately. So I have submitted all of our expenses through the routes to recovery grant. To this point, we have actually submitted bills of, of six hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents. So again, that deals with all of the wages at the police department and then also with Deer Grove EMS as they all fall under what we can be reimbursed for. So we have maxed out our allotted hundred and nine thousand by a little over four hundred and seventy-five thousand. So the reason why we did the max amount is in our conversations with Dev and Mr. Bebe and Baker Tilly, they did tell us to file everything in because there are some municipalities and counties that are not going to reach their maximum. So if there is money left over in the pool, there is a possibility that we could actually get more than the hundred and nine thousand. So that's why we went well above and beyond our allotted amount for reimbursement. I did talk to Chief Lang today from EMS. He did want to pass on to the board that their uptick in COVID-related responses and patients has steadily been increasing over the past two, two to three to four weeks, is, which is consistent with, of course, the numbers in Dane County. So their staff at this point is healthy. They've only had one close contact where they had to worry about quarantining. But at this point, they're, they're still up and running, but they are dealing with more and more COVID cases than Cottage Grove slash Duke Field everything. So any questions for me?
Lieutenant Wagner, I just wanted to thank you for following up with the Dane County map that you sent us with the cases for our census tract. And I've been following it and that data says the same thing. I, I lost my slip of paper I wrote my note on, but I think we have ninety-five new cases in the last two weeks in the census tract. That includes village and part of the town, but I hope that anyone watching keeps up their guard and stays safe and continues wearing their mask. So we can all hopefully relax in 2021. Thanks.
Thanks, Lieutenant Wagner. We'll be on to JJ.
No report.
All right. Sean, anything?
I have no report as well.
All right, good. Paul's staff is healthy, that's good. All right, then we'll move on to communication, Melissa's business. First one is consider approval of the vouchers. Any questions, comments on the vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to prove as presented, is there a second?
A second.
Oh, you beat me.
Seconded by Paul, stirred by Melissa, just close. Any further discussions or questions?
I was just wondering what the porta potty was for. We don't need that anymore, do we, at Dream Parks? Or do we?
It's not at the Dream Park. It's at, it's behind our office building. We were, right now we're finishing up an in-person program. And rather than have the, the participants come through our office and use the restrooms, we've factored in a porta potty for them to use outside.
Oh, okay, great. Not anymore in the cold though, right?
No, the program is done as of Thursday.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we have a motion second to approve the vouchers as presented. Is there any further discussion? Having heard and done all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Any abstain? Motion carries. Correspondence, I don't have anything other than what I shared earlier with the email related to the public hearing. My brain just went dead. Anybody else? Okay, moving on then to upcoming community events.
I have Christmas in the Grove is coming. I'm on the committee. We have limited events this year. Kick things off on We have limited events this year. Um, kick things off on December fourth with the virtual tree lighting. Um, Derek's gonna help us get it on cable TV um and our YouTube also, so that's awesome. So more people can view it. Um, and then there's a light display tour contest called Light Up the Grove where commercial and residential uh entries can um send an email to lightupthegrove2020@gmail.com and I will make sure that you get put on the map of the tour. So um you can enjoy all the festive Christmas lights in Cottage Grove.
Thanks, Heidi. Um, future agenda items.
Nothing jumps out to me that's uh anything other than the usual type items that come up, but uh no- nothing special right now.
Okay.
I have something special.
All right, Sean?
It's not really special. Our uh tree inventory has been completed and Kelly Tuttle from Blue Stem uh Forestry will be at the meeting on first week in December, our next meeting, and give a brief presentation to the board on how that went.
Okay. All right, great. And uh Melissa, the library survey results that you guys are planning on giving a presentation, but that's not next time, it's the following time?
Yep, the twenty-first.
Okay. I knew it was coming up, I just wanted to make sure I, we remember that. So we will make sure that's on the agenda, and I knew it wasn't last, next time.
Something fun for the last, the last uh meeting of the year.
All right. All right, then um we will move on to item twelve, which is um a closed session in negotiation for developers incentive negotiations uh in tid number five. So I'll move that the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five parentheses one parentheses E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified business uh, public business where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, this is roll call vote, so Lisa, please.
Alan?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Limburg? Bradcliffe?
Aye.
Bandrelby?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Go on to closed session.